Welcome everybody to the night in Kyle Water or at the September Scott County School. We're going to stay and have a moment of silence. Probably about. We had some people help us purchase scoreboard for Ryco and well, we didn't purchase. We have had purchased through the school funds. They purchased scoreboard Ryco in Twin Springs. We started all that project this summer and just having a hard time finding people available to dig a hole, we get to pull up some rock. We thought we was out of luck. So there's some goodness out there and lots of connections. And there was this group from Cloverdale, Virginia. That's Bud Run. So it's the New River Electrical Corporation. And they come down here and got a hole for us where our maintenance could put our scoreboards up. And I don't know if it's true, mostly about thousand dollars a hole. They didn't charge us that much. Of course, we can recognize them, but I'm about two and a half hours away from here. I just thought us as a whole would just say something. And I just think they like to do stuff this or like is it once in a while. I should appreciate it. I will appreciate it. All right. So we'll get back to the to the main agenda here. Idols add the agenda. If anybody got anything to add to the agenda? If not, I need approval.
Make your motion.
Got a motion from Mr. Sally. One second from Ms. Gilmore on favor. Opposed. Motion carried. All right. Approval of minutes. We got to leave the office first. Y'all got time to look over the minutes. Questions. Got a motion from Mr. Houseright? Got a second from Mr. Hood on favor? Opposed. Motion carried. All right. Approval of claims. The schools are back up. We have little thoughts on what on, but before we hand any particular item on reveals. But you got question? On? If so, you get the right person to answer the question. We'll stop here. A motion from Mr. Calm. Got a second from Mr. Hood on favor? Opposed. All right. If anybody wish to address the board, please leave it to five minutes. We got a lot of people. Thank you.
All right. I'll be controlled, please. So my name is Kim. I was at the last school meeting. Still working on office first. At that meeting, Mr. Gilmore had asked about your re-laying of recording. No one really cared to give a response to that, but under the freedom of information and out of the question, what is the process for teachers and staff to legally report sexual harassment on students?
And if that's a full year request, technically we got five days to respond.
You don't know your policy? So you don't know the policy that you come to?
I'm not saying that we don't know our policy. We do know our policy, but at the same time, by law, you can request it orally, but again, we respond in writing.
Yeah, I agree with that. I just wondered if anybody would actually care enough to address the question by my daughter being harassed. Okay, that's fine. So again, at the last meeting, I asked why you were not aware of multiple complaints on a teacher when multiple students had come forward and advised that complaints have been made since at least 2011 on Facebook. Right. Since before he was transferred from Twin Springs, why he was at high school, at the Gexley Hospital. And nobody really wanted to take to that question either. As to why you were not aware. So I guess my question is, why were you not aware? Just bringing it up. Because if you're not aware, then that means somebody dropped the ball. Because it was reported to staff at the school, to my knowledge. So that means someone dropped the ball. So can we understand how it's okay that the staff failed to follow the correct reporting and procedures? And the students at Twin Springs Hospital make it feel like they're exaggerating? And their fear of retaliation if they talk to anyone else? Another question that I asked, since that's not on the menu. So another question that I asked last time was, what is your, touching, I guess, on the first question, what's your, what is your sexual harassment training every year? And I know that Mr. Smith answered last time. And he said that you do have sexual harassment training every year that involves all staff. He said that in addition to my question, I said, will that be revisited because some of the felt like it cracks? And you said it linked to that. So my question is today, now that we're so far into the year, what has changed and has that been revisited?
In addition, we've got training in all of the ministry members right now, sexual harassment from the county. Also, we have contacted social services. Next, we've come to the training with all of our ministry members. It's kind of a push to, it's kind of a pull. Contact in San Antonio, who's a top of mind. Training, so contact with them, the top of mind. Regulations were out there in October, the line of training, the label is there. So if we require a ministry member to give their label, set up like training, also the top of mind. And the rest of principals, even though we send our sexual harassment training for a record to a parent, which is not them, you, we've asked them to try and reshape our parent. We also have completed an online training this year. There's an online training module with child abuse related to the department of social services, department of staff to do that training this year too. And we also have a state resource, the counselors, the community, the children, the kids, we had a kindergarten, which is a little different than kindergarten, but we have a community that's also trying to get sexual harassment.
So that was, those were things that were added in addition? That wasn't a particular process?
Some, some were added. We have trained our students in task, we have existed. We have, it isn't much, this isn't that many times, but we have done online training. We have done San Antonio training. We have brought in CPS, the Department of Social Services, that is, we have not done that with our ministry members, which are practicing on top, training with our ministry members, which are getting sanctioned also. And all of the licensed staff, if you're a teacher, you have to go through that child abuse related training, five years of license training. We felt it was important to go ahead and do it for your mission.
Yeah, I would think so too, considering this has been an issue. That somebody clearly failed to follow the proper reporting. So do you think that in addition to that, that there's going to be clear expectations? Do you think there's going to be zero tolerance going forward? And there's going to be clearer expectations set for staff or even one that doesn't have zero tolerance?
We feel like we have said that expectation issue.
You feel like you have this year? Because again, it's been a major concern, the fact that all this is kind of a lot on social media. And in the previous meeting, the responses we got were, you can't believe everything you see or hear on social media. Victim blaming, asking the parents, why didn't they report more? Why didn't they look into it more instead of addressing it with, will address this? And again, when a staff member of preschool tells the student that they cannot disrupt somebody's livelihood because you think they're weird, that's definitely not garbage you use for a victim. And that definitely does not show that it's being addressed. So thank you for, Mr. Smith, for taking the time to answer my questions about the changes. You seem to be the only one that's really concerned about it. And I think that should speak loud and clear for people for election time.
Anyone else?
I'm not trouble. I'm the national president for the Guardian Riders. Big gentleman that you see behind you. Those that don't know who we are and what we do, we're a victims advocate club. And that is, we stand in the gap between victims and abusers. And we try to help those that can't help themselves. It could be veterans, it can be a battered spouse, elderly, homeless, but most of the time, it's kids. And that's what these guys come together to do. And that's why we're here tonight. We've been made aware of that, of these issues, and I do appreciate the training. But you cannot train the predator out of somebody that breaks on somebody's. This man, and we don't know if he was guilty, if he's guilty, we're not, fortunately, we live in the greatest country in the world. Where you're in, it's until proven guilty. But I can tell you guys, everything that they have sent to us, he absolutely, absolutely is, is guilty. We can't make that determination. We're not the judge, we're not the jury. But it's undeniable that with the information that they have sent us, if you guys have seen that, that you can't make that determination. And the thing is, he's guilty. We, we feel like he is. And obviously, we're not the judge, we're not the jury. But every one of you are just as guilty for enabling that behavior. The members of this board. And a lot of the parents are afraid to come forward because they're afraid of retaliation for their kids. These guys behind me ain't afraid to squat. And I'm going to call names. There were three of you sitting on this board when that man was transferred from Gate City. Mr. Gilmore, Mr. Templeton, you're not going to answer the public. And we don't expect you to. But his sexual harassment that went on in Gate City, that's on him. This time in Twin Springs, that's on you. You've got to put your head on the pillow. You've got to look at yourself in the mirror. That's on you. If he's proven guilty, y'all's good old boy network where you slap him on the back, move him one school to another, that's over. That's done. Understand, this is a national club. This is the tip of the iceberg. We've got a long reach. Wherever you move him to, we probably got a chapter there. And it's going to be in one of these guys backyard. And he's going to be setting up to teach one of our kids or one of our grandkids. We will not let this die. Y'all sweep it under the road long enough. The accusations, if they're proven to be true, we will not stop until not only him, but this board is held accountable for enabling him. And these kids are going to get their justice. It's sad. Y'all have been entrusted to take care and to protect our children, but you're putting them in harm's way. I don't need to know what you do with personnel or anything else. But fix it. Fix it. Because we're not going to let up. It's not a threat. I'm just telling you what's going to happen. Fix it.
Anyone else?
How you doing, guys? My name's Mad Dog. I'm over to the junior chapter. Something remind me, when I was in basic training and everything, we talked about a few little vets sitting out here too. Because when I walked in, I seen every child, every opportunity. Okay? I understand that I talked to some parents, some stuff coming through, so these kids didn't get that opportunity. Because they were dealing with this predator, so they had to move to another class. Or you had a young girl that was sitting in a closet, probably three by three by eight foot tall. While that teacher was in the room, pictures of this girl on the screen. Now, I know y'all got a policy where use of pictures, you have to have a written permission from the parent and the student who is going to use pictures. Why wasn't that a great? Don't know. I, I'm just going to speak because I know y'all's not going to answer. Then I come in and I see respect is the next thing I want. Where's the respect for this girl? Where's the respect for these kids that are getting pictures sent around by grownups? And nothing being done about it? Come on, guys, I know y'all got kids. I know you got grandkids. Is this what the world that y'all want them to live in? Next thing I come to. Work ethic. Boys in the military, work ethic, morale, taking initiative to do what you're supposed to do, to honor your country for its values that we have grown up on. Y'all are not giving those values out. Y'all are teaching people that y'all are okay with kids being looked at, pictures being sent to these kids, adults on kids' social media, and one being a teacher. And all y'all do is move them from one school to another school. My understanding of that is driving school buses. I mean, that's good, stick them in a cage with them. That's what I do. Then we got the good one here, passion. Where's y'all's passion? You've got these kids going in here, where's your passion for these kids? I don't see no passion in none of y'all's faces. There's no passion here. I served in the military twenty-some years. I deployed three times, so y'all could be sitting here right now. So y'all could have these y'all since you've done. But we're entrusting you with our kids. And what are y'all doing? Nothing. Nothing. You won't even answer a man's simple questions. Let me ask y'all this. Please, somebody answer this. You have a sports program in Scott County, correct? Can at least get a nod that says yes, we have sports? Okay, so you've got a sports program. What if a football player gets hit in the head and he gets concussion? What do y'all do? What is the procedure for that? What is y'all's protocol? Okay, Smith County's protocol is, is you take that kid, goes to the doctor, he's got a concussion, he stays out for a certain amount of games, he has to be seen by a doctor again. But when a kid comes in and tells somebody that they have been sexually harassed, or their picture's up all over the school stuff, they're getting new pictures sent by a teacher with a standing ovation flag, then y'all do nothing about it? But if you get a football player that has concussion, y'all are going to pop up because you don't want to be sued by the family or anything else. Like, my boss man said, he's not threatening y'all. What he's telling y'all is, is that we're going to go away. We're that itch that you can scratch time and time again, and all you want to do is drop blood. That's who we are. We're here to be the voice for the people who don't have a voice or are scared to open their mouth to come before y'all because y'all put things out that says they can't come and talk to y'all. Every one of you, there's only one of you sitting here, Mr. Smith. I hope when it comes time, I hope your name is on that ballot because you're the only one that as a man has dropped something that makes you a man. That you have shown everybody here that you're a man and that you're going to take care of these kids. And I applaud you for that. But keep in mind, if y'all don't do something, we're going to take the single foot. We're going to reach out, we're going to call for arms, we're going to say, hey, guys, we need help down here. We need y'all to help us look through the laws. We need you to help us do this. We need y'all to help us take care of these children in Scott County. This is not an O V, you know, epidemic. It's nothing about drugs. It's about y'all have a teacher that is working on nineteen years being in Scott County, that has done what he's done, and none of you have reacted to it. I hope you can lay your head down at night and ask the Lord to get rid of one of you because that's what you need. Find some peace because y'all are going to be judged. You may not get it right now, but your judgment will come. So that's something maybe you did tonight, and y'all get done, y'all sit down together, have a little powwow and say, hey, we need to do something. Because these guys ain't going away. And God, all you got to do is can't believe everything on social media. That's the thing. So you can go ahead and you can look at the picture and you can have it analyzed and show that it was not a fake, that it had something to focus on. I can tell you right now, I've got a buddy of mine that's already looking through the picture. And what he's telling, they're not fake. So that's what y'all have to deal with. So put that in your pipe, smoke it, pass it along, share it, and do something about this predator.
Anybody else?
Right, I'm with Mr. Wood. I heard a bunch of comments, he don't drive school buses, so.
Can you tell me what he does?
He don't do nothing. He's suspended from school system.
He's suspended or he resigned?
Well, I just said he's suspended.
In response to.
So if he's resigned, he has the right to be around other kids. You understand that, right?
Please stop.
Yes.
In response to recommendation or dismissal. And after initiating procedures for dismissal of a teacher as required by code of Virginia, we were notified today through Mr. Hall's representative that he has submitted paperwork for retirement through the Virginia Retirement System.
Just keep all the benefits great.
As a school division, we are currently looking at any additional actions that can be taken.
Great talk, guys. This wouldn't have even happened if we had come to the last meeting. Disgusting.
So you actually said, thank you to Lance and fifty people of his benefits after blowing up these kids. That is sad, sir. That is sad on you.
You can tell.
You got five minutes to rest, boy. But I will say, everything else, y'all don't know the whole facts.
Oh, I know enough that it happened to my daughter.
They're asking you questions and you won't answer them. So how do we get the facts if you won't answer the question?
We have any questions, personnel, we can't answer them.
It's obvious. You said it in your own words, so.
Is anything going to be done for the principal not held responsible for mandate or reporting of my daughter? Does everybody just get by with things?
The thing is, these folks have asked questions they can't get answers to, and I get it, personnel, all that. And he's retired, great. That means that he's not going to be around these kids here. But does he walk? You're going to let a man walk? And I know you said you're looking at what the school system can do fresh charges. Looking, don't get it done. You're going to let a predator go out there and walk? That ain't fixing it, guys.
Well, like cities, you've got to prove he's guilty.
Absolutely.
And they went through that, so.
You.
Our hands are tied.
Evidently, that's the problem. Our hands are mine.
All right, since it's not murder, that's what we live by. You put a question. It's a question. We're going to move on. And the next part of our agenda is superintendent report. My hand over to Mr. Hurst.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in your baggage, you have a copy of the first semester first quarter allocation for our schools. Unless there's any particular questions, I ask your approval as presented.
Got a motion from Sally? Got a second from Ms. Gilmore on favor? Opposed. Motion carried.
Next, I have our specific committees. First is communications committee. I do need a school board member representative to serve on this committee, committee volunteers.
Which one's this?
Communications committee. That's one I want, yes, sir.
I'll.
With Mr. Templeton added to the list of communications committee, unless there's any other questions, I ask your approval of the committee members as presented.
Somebody give a vote. Got a motion from Mr. Houseright? Got a second from Mr. Sally on favor? Opposed. Motion carried.
Next, we have the school safety audit committee. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to this committee, I ask your approval as presented.
Motion for Mr. Hurst. Got a second from Mr. Calm on favor? Opposed. Motion carried.
Next, we have the county attorney's committee. I do need a school board member representative to serve on this committee. Can you do that?
I'm sorry, I'm late.
Mr. Houseright. Before you act, please. Unless there's any questions, comments, I ask your approval of this as presented.
Mr. Hood, second from Ms. Sally on favor? Opposed. Motion carried.
Next, we have the Sally's Freedom Benefit School Calendar Committee. I need Ms. Gilmore to serve on the question. Or Mr. Sally, I'm sorry. I'll read it. Thank you, Mr. Sally. Mr. Sally added to the list for the Sally's Freedom Benefit School Calendar Committee. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to committee members as approved as presented.
Got a motion from Mr. Hood. Got a second from Mr. Calm on favor? Opposed. Motion carried.
Next, we have the parent advisory council, the head of programs. I ask your approval of this committee as presented.
Mr. Hood?
Sir.
Second from Mr. Houseright on favor? Opposed. Motion carried.
We have next the remediation of the standards committee. Unless there's any particular questions, I ask your approval as presented.
Make a motion. Got a motion from Mr. Sally, second from Mr. Calm on favor? Opposed. Motion carried.
And last, we have the special education 504 preschool education gifted talent advisory board. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to this particular board, I ask your approval as presented.
Mr. Hood?
Second from Mr. Calm on favor? Opposed. Motion carried.
Next, I have a discussion or approval of the valid health, excuse me, valid telehealth service agreement. I ask you will to, Mr. Surble, to review this document. I know this has been a talking point for us. I guess when they first presented in July, they did send too many disagreements. Hopefully, had an opportunity to look this over. If anyone have any particular questions in regards to this agreement?
Just a couple of things on this group. The term on it is for one-year period. If you all wanted to not have the term automatically renewed, there's a date, you know, this term on it. There's also the standard governing law provisions, or it's Tennessee Corporation. I'm glad to see that it made publication. We've got governing law here in Virginia as far as the degrees that the in accordance with it. But a lot of the other terms are standard terms. If you all have any questions, that's legal side of that needs what doesn't.
Did we approve that, sir?
Well, we, we approved the legal, to pursue the legal review, but we actually didn't approve the document.
I have questions. Just need a motion.
Just a motion to approve the agreement. Valid Telehealth Services.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say it.
Got a motion for me. I'll say it from Mr. Sally. I'll on favor. Aye. Opposed? Motion, carry.
Next item we have is the Maybe Lives Policy according to school clinics. This will be all school can, school clinics within school division. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to this policy. I did ask Ms. Bowden, the school nurse coordinator, to develop this policy unless there's any particular questions in regards to this, I ask your approval, let's present.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Sally? Say it from Mr. Gilmore. I'm on favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, carry.
Also, I was approached by Mr. Edward Cox, who is with James River Advisors. And he has permission to be able to distribute financial information to staff. Of course, during, or replacing the male marks, or even provide opportunities for staff to come and meet with him and visit outside of the structural time, loaded out with hats and board. If that would be acceptable, that's what I might say. Is this, um, our discussion on investment money? Yes, he would advise employees how to invest investments. Financial investment. And you have any batteries of information?
Captain, I'll make a motion. Got a motion for me. I'll say it from Mr. Hood. I'm on favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, carry.
Next item we have, this is a large document. It's the Joint Legislative Audit Audit and Review Commission, otherwise known as JAR. And what their findings are for Virginia's K through twelve funding formula. This is a briefing. This will be shared with the members of the General Assembly. I want you to have a copy of this. And also, around your desk there, they competies from both the House and Senate did approve and recommend a budget which was passed. The Governor of Florida still has to sign off on the budget amendments. This document here again is for informational purposes. You should see that around your desk is a key budget policy choices. Where it begins with education is over on page three. In terms of the additional money, Scott County with this new budget, it's gonna be a considerable amount in terms of additional payments. I do not know what the requirement at this point in time will be at the locality. They have factored in a two percent increase in salary raises. But that will become effective January first, two thousand twenty-four, so we make that effective then. If everything still goes through. So that's somewhat an update before we react with the budget. And as soon as I receive more additional information, I will add some along too as well. Does anyone have any questions in regards to the commission findings or whatever you share with me? The next item we have, I want to share this with you, well, this is from the Department of Education. This is from the Department of Special Populations and the findings. It does say that Scott County schools did meet the financial requirements. Which are the special population. Does anyone have any particular questions in regards to this document? We also have made application for the school safety audit. Excuse me, school security grant application. You have a copy of that also. We have been quite successful over the years. Failed to break with the exact amount that we had received from the school safety, school security equipment grants. I want to say, hopefully since its inception, we have received over, I want to say over seven hundred thousand dollars that we have applied in all of our schools, and we're continuing to make application for these. But I just wanted to share that with you. Does anyone have any particular question in regards to this great application? On the cafeteria end, we have also made application for the fresh fruit and vegetable program. And Scott County was awarded. It is on page three. Of the schools, we had five. They qualified for the fresh fruit and vegetable program. Share that information with us later. See what kind of questions in regards to that. Next item we have are the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four Head Start Program Goals. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to this document, I ask your approval, let's present.
I'll make that motion. Mr. Houseright?
Sir.
Say it from Mr. Tom. I'm on favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, carry.
Next, we have the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four Head Start School Readiness Goals. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to this document, I ask your approval, let's present.
Make a motion.
Mr. Sally? Say it from Mr. Hood. I'm on favor. Opposed? Motion, carry.
Next, we have the Brutal Head Start Training and Technical Assistance Plan for the two thousand twenty-four fiscal year. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to this document, I ask your approval, let's present.
Ms. Gilmore? I say it from Mr. Tom. I'm on favor. Opposed? Motion, carry.
Next item we have is the Head Start Continuation Grant Application for the two thousand twenty-four fiscal year. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to this document, I ask your approval, let's present.
Mr. Hood? Mr. Houseright? I'm on favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, carry.
Next item we have is the Head Start Financial Report for July two thousand twenty-three. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to this document, I ask your approval, let's present.
Make a motion.
Mr. Sally? Say it from Mr. Hood. I'm on favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, carry.
Last item I have is the Head Start Directive Report for August two thousand twenty-three. This is for informational purposes. Does anyone have any questions in regards to this document?
Head Start Report? Six? Chairman, put the board, that's all we have. Thank you, Mr. Burris. My understanding, you need to enter some close meetings.
Yes, I move that we enter closed meetings and discuss candidates for employment and assignment performance of teachers, teaching assistants, coaches, custodians of section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven, eight one of the Code of Virginia head committee.
Got a motion, a second. I'll favor. Opposed? Motion, carry. More terms. Thank you.